This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm gonna call this the order. Okay, uh I'm gonna call the East Hampton uh City Council Ordinance Committee to order uh Monday May ninth. Little after six P M. Uh and this meeting is being held in person.
Wow.
Uh and we're not remote because they haven't figured out how to do that yet. So um it looks like we're all here. We do have two sets of minutes. And you want me to I can pull those up if you want, or we can just um approve them. Doesn't matter to me.
Was it twenty second and the twenty ninth? When was the joint hold of hearing?
Okay, um.
I can make motion to approve those.
Okay.
Okay, all set for that?
Okay, we have motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's say we don't have to do roll call.
Oh no, I felt sorry to go there.
Yes, that's really great. So um uh there's nobody here from the public. The public speed time.
Public?
Nope, no public. Um and the people that I invited don't seem to be here yet. So and and I actually never heard back. Um I think some members of the E D I C were interested in coming. Um I know um there there were a couple. I know that Gwen had a conflict. Uh so she wasn't gonna be able to come. Uh so let's take a look at what we have. Um there's two things I wanted to dig into a little bit tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I have them both pulled up 'cause we have this really nifty um so this is the uh vegan storefront. And then we also I I don't know if you all saw this, but it was a town by town comparison of vegan storefront ordinance. So I figured we could take a look at this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw that we got it and I skimmed it, but I haven't like really got it.
So we can we can dig into that a little bit. Um and then I pulled this up. Um which is the things that we wanted to uh these are the ordinance review committee recommendations. And I thought maybe we could get ourselves into a place 'cause I did talk to Barbara and she seemed to think that we could bundle the the minor ones. But she wants us to wait till the new fiscal years 'cause the advertising is gonna be a bit of a bear. 'Cause we have to put in all the language for each one of the change.
Oh.
So it's gonna cost money.
That yeah, okay.
But um but I thought maybe we could dig into that just a little bit. Um and we.
The ones that we already wanted to approve or the?
Yeah, just to get the finalized list.
Okay. I have in the minutes from that date. Yeah.
You do have it in the minutes. So maybe what we can do is we can pull uh we can pull those out, put in a new document.
Yeah.
We can send that to Barbara um with like the proposed changes. So maybe we can just that's something we can um jump into. Uh and then I know uh we said we have new business um which was just and I'll I'll make this up later so we can see the. Um which is the uh amend chapter chapter six by adding a two six two three receptor of advertising practices limited pregnancy centers. So we can talk about that as well. Um and I so I was thinking maybe we could start with the ordinance review committee stuff. Just give people if the building commissioner is gonna be able to make it, give them a little time to get.
Sure.
Um and you know, I think as we as we look at this, um you know, I think as many of these little ones that we can get to Barbara for the easy changes, I think we should try to bundle all those together and do it all at once.
Yeah.
Right? And then I think the other ones, we're gonna have to pull out and resubmit them to the committee as new agenda items. Um just so it's really clear what we're trying to do. Does that does that seem could make sense to you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was trying to find where I you know, I typed up all the things.
And um oh I don't did and remember we were gonna do like a matrix or like a spreadsheet or something? I don't know.
Sounds good.
Did that ever happen?
Well, here it is though, um.
Oh, but did we found it?
Um yeah, so.
I don't know if I sent it to you.
It's the February seventeenth minutes. Do you want me to just share with you again?
It's too mine. 'Cause like if you do that, I can pull it up in my um.
Yeah. Oh yeah, yeah, then you know.
Let's see. Um hold this. I mean, I can also look at it too.
Oh, you're a.
Two seventeen.
Yeah, February seventeenth.
I hope it's a.
You now call right here. Doesn't it know the two's up to the top?
Okay, yep, there it is. Okay, got it. And let me uh this is so cool.
Look, I can just.
Yep, let's take a look.
So you know, to go down to the continuing businesses, that that's kind of all of our.
These are all the ones.
That's the that was our decisions.
Oh, okay.
So those are yeah, that's our recommendation for all the change.
Oh, okay. Alright, so what I think we can do um are being recommended based on ordinance review yet. So uh so I think I'll put these in a new document. I'll just cut and paste these out and then we can just go through each one, make sure that we feel like it's ready to go. Does that sound like plan?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Great.
Alright, very good. So let me just just create a new document here. Just gonna take a quick second. And I'm going to cut this to. Okay, alright, I got them all.
Oh, and don't forget just that last thing at the bottom.
Yeah.
The ordinance the gender language.
Correct.
Oh, this I know, I know. As for that catch. I was like, it doesn't have a number next to it, so.
Yeah.
Um.
'Cause it's like twenty different things.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Uh alright, I'm gonna I'm gonna actually hold on. I'll I'll share this. I'm just formatting this real quick so we can see it. And then I will um stop the share. Pull up this one, start the share. Okay. Okay, so let's take a look at these one at a time. So, when an ordinance license, geez, an ordinance prohibits any act without the license or permission of a certain officer, board, or committee, such officer, board, or committee shall have the right to issue a license for a permit or permit for such act to be performed. And is that that is
That's our change.
that's what we changed it to?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It was way more confusing before that.
No, it doesn't make sense.
I know, okay.
I think it's just 'cause there's a bunch of points where it says you can't do this without a license from liquor board. It's like, okay, and just to be super clear,
Right.
in stating that, we are also stating that the liquor board has the authority to issue that license. I don't actually understand why we need this language, but if some lawyer at some point decided it was necessary, I'm not gonna rock that boat.
Okay.
Where does the committee have something?
So that one is relatively straightforward. Um.
These are all the loving truths, so they look pretty.
Yeah. So the city council shall cause copies of these ordinances posted on the city website and be kept in the city clerk's office in print and digital form where copies or portions thereof may be requested.
But then we added the website and we also took away a charge, I think.
I think so, yeah. Um and this is so this is under section two dash five one, section C. Is that members of the council? Okay, so I might is it is it okay if I just move that up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I do think there's like this this C is a new thing. There's not a current section C.
Okay. Okay.
Um.
So I'll say add section C.
Or maybe there is.
No, 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 there was. I mean, I'm only on the the ordinances, so.
There was this thing. Yeah. Members of the council, they shall be appointed by the mayor for terms of two years.
No, it was there. It just it just was like they shall be appointed for life or something before. They shall.
Right, it just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And tell me die.
It didn't say what their term length was, so.
Right.
It was a part of it.
Sort of the implication.
And so this except change here is this that was just that we accepted the changes within this uh section two twenty-three?
Yeah, whatever. Yeah.
So I'm wondering if I just take that out, exception.
Yeah, 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 take it out. Yeah, I think I think I was just taking.
Okay. Okay, so upon receipt of such request, the city council shall vote to convene five member panels to review proposed names to hear public testimony, including building public hearing to offer a recommendation to the council. Mayor shall appoint two members of his or her choosing to the panel. Should we say their choosing if we're going general neutral language?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, their choosing.
Okay. Is uh good.
To section ten five one, I haven't seen.
There. Is that wrong?
Uh.
There.
You got it right the second time.
There.
Geez, okay. Uh oh, and we're just gonna eliminate sections five. Uh I wonder if there's any other gender non-neutral language. I didn't see. That's good for us to.
I I think like, I mean, we could go through and just do a like and just look at all the places that he in the document. There's a lot.
Uh that's search.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then place.
It it did say that was already section C. It just had the floor said until their successors are designated.
Okay. Okay, so we have uh it's actually eight point one. How's our people? We write for ease of comprehension.
Which I did, I've seen your reading.
All right, so let me um let me grab that. I'll look for it.
It's still not great, but it's better.
I remember it. I remember when you sent that.
Well, yeah, I remember. We were like, we're not even sure what.
Yeah. I wanted to just.
What's scuba diving with it?
What happened?
Uh kinda looks like it, yeah.
What is it?
Someone's like scuba diving on the pond.
Really?
Yeah.
That sounds fun. Okay, so uh revise eight point one language?
Yeah.
Okay, and I am going to do then. So let's uh cut paste. This here. Okay, garbage. And I'm gonna make this a little bigger and get it in line with the rest. It's these, I believe, are E B grammar. Huh.
You gotta do it right. You put that there the painter, the paint thing up in the next to the left hundred percent.
Yeah, this thing?
Yeah, if you put it over what you wanted to format it or format it. No, first the other one.
Oh, first this one?
And then you paint that formatting after that, yeah. And then put a paint.
That's actually. Look at that. You said more something every day?
That's like most of my job is just painting and formatting.
Oh, really?
No, 'cause I do a lot of report writing and people will send in different sections.
Yeah, different fonts. Alright, section eight point one, garbage or refuse. Yeah, um any dirt, filth, garbage, decaying animal or vegetable matter, snow, ice, or any combustible or non-combustible waste material. This includes but is not limited to such material as papers, playbills, posters, notice advertisements, printed papers of any description, or any advertising appliance or medium, except newspapers distributed to purchasers, rags, cotton boxes, car wait, cart is that? Yeah, carts. Boxes, wood, rubber, leather, tree branches, yard trimmings or clippings, tin cans, metals, mineral matter, glass, dust, and the residue from the burning of wood materials, coke, and other combustible materials. No person shall place or cosbe place any garbage or refuse on any street, lane, common, park, court, alley, or any public place in the city without the express approval of the city council or its agents. No person shall do the same on any private property without the express approval of the owner of the said property or agent. Okay, um.
That huge definition of what garbage and refuge was was like nested within a sentence before.
Yes, I remember.
So I decided the easiest way to do it would be to just start it with a definition and then.
Yeah, that that makes sense. Um and I'm one, I mean, no no person shall place or cosbe place any garbage or refuse on any street, lane, common, park, court. Are we getting or should we put in an exception here for people that put their garbage on the street to get picked up? Like, do we need to do that or is it just implied that that's an acceptable use? Because this kind of makes that against city ordinance.
You know, that's a good like, I guess that would be a good point. Well, I guess if although if you do that on your property,
If you do it on your.
then it's the express approval of the o you are the owner, so it's fine.
It's it's fine. It's fine. Right, but it's so but generally, the city owns about the first three feet of this, so.
Uh. Okay, okay, good. So I guess you could say.
Who does coke like?
Uh uh I think isn't that um uh it's like a burned uh.
Like burned up wood and stuff.
Yeah, it's like a like potash and coke. I think are it's kinda similar. I think it'd be let's Google it. Hey, I mean, that's.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This is no copybook.
No, no.
No, you don't Google.
Okay, uh. Okay, uh let's see. Oh, it is coke dust is combustible and an explosion hazard, potentially catastrophic hazard which must be controlled in coke handling operations. But what is it? It 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 coke, coal, and wood are fossil fuels that are used for cooking purposes. I don't I don't think anybody would use coke anymore, right?
I don't think so.
I wonder if we I wonder if that's one of the things we can like strike out of here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wood material. How about other conduct and other combust combustible?
Yeah, their covers that got us coke.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I don't need that comment. So all right, perfect. And no person shall place or cosbe place any garbage. I mean, um. We wanna I mean, it's literally no.
I guess you could say something like.
Uh except for uh the express uh intent of it being picked up or something.
What's the phrase we use in a bunch of places where it's like this should not be understood? I mean, like.
It yeah.
Garbage that's
Yeah, like.
that's placed for the purpose of.
Yeah, um this section uh should not uh.
Like, there's a specific language you use in like our right to farm ordinance.
Yeah.
That says like, it's just a good way of saying like, yeah, it shouldn't be construed.
Construed. Construed to prohibit uh the uh uh.
The placing out of garbage or recyclables for um.
Placing.
The placement. Of um trash.
For designated.
For the express purpose of being picked up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be picked up by uh just picked up.
Yeah. It's collected.
Collected by a license. No, it's.
Collective, um in a timely manner.
Yeah.
Like that, yeah. That's easy. That's an easy fix. Not construed. It doesn't like that.
Yeah. Should not, no, not not vegan.
Not vegan. Ha ha, see. Alright, thank you, Google. Great. Uh yeah, I think that looks good.
Yeah.
We're good?
Looks good, man.
Mm.
Yeah. Beautiful. Alright, uh okay, so yeah, and this is such an F. I'm assuming so I'm gonna put a period there.
Yeah. Do we leave crockery in there? Mm-hmm.
Good. Um no person shall place upon any street in the city any glass crockery.
I bet we left that in there.
Scrap iron nails.
Yeah. Let me look what it looks like. Maybe it was like, maybe that's a big improvement a little ways.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe we were worn down.
I have I have it here too. I have it um if you want. Um see if I can find the crockery.
Okay.
Wait, what was this? This was eight point two one?
Yeah.
Yeah, no person should embarrass anyone else.
Uh into the feet of horses.
Oh, we did go we did go we did go into the feet of horses.
Oh, you said animals or people.
We how we changed it to animals or people.
Yeah.
Uh, grass, weed. No person should place on a jam any
Yeah.
I mean, it's a little old fashioned.
It's cute. It's cute.
Old fashioned, but it is kinda it has like that.
We should leave some.
Yeah, it's oh, we should leave some like hokey East Hampton language in here. Why why not, right?
Little vintage language. That's it.
Okay, and I'll play games in the streets. Come on, that's like summertime playing a game, but let's say, right, let's give this one.
I know, I don't like this.
Alright, no person shall within the limits of any public street or highway in the city play any games which interfere. That seems far. Okay, uh with the convenient free use of the street or highway of any person traveling or passing along, same. No person shall throw stones, that's fine. Snowballs, sticks, or other missiles, or shoot any spring gun or air gun or bow and arrows into the public way in the city. I love that.
I want to know like the situation, cause that.
What what caused that?
And then the nineteen forties. There was a this town was wild in the forties, late so late late thirties, early forties.
I guess so. Yeah, uh I mean, some big snowball fights maybe? I don't know, with uh air guns and um yeah, I think.
I'm seeing fun art project defining pictures from the forties and like putting it next to these ordinance.
Yeah, that's that would be cool. That would be cool. You could put that up.
Mm.
Our gallery feature. Um I think this is fine, right? We already fixed this one. So eight point three five. Something that's stupid right there.
Yeah. Mm.
Obstruct the sidewalks by placing objects in their own. No person shall place any se upon any sidewalk and any objects that would obstruct the sidewalk for more than one hour or more than ten minutes after being notified by police officers who are moving. Alright, fair enough.
Mm.
We fixed that one, I guess. Uh barricading letting any person who has grants a permit to obstruct or excavate upon any street shall put up and keep at all times suitable railing around the parts of the sidewalk or street so obstructed or dug up. As long as the same shall uh be unsafe or inconvenient for traveling, the person granted the permit shall also ensure there's sufficient amount of lighting where the the
Yeah, section maybe.
where the parts of the streets, lighting where the parts of the streets or sidewalk are dug up and dusted on to more travel. It's interesting.
Didn't that something like lanterns before?
Yeah, it's a little.
Yes, it did say lanterns. Now, I'm thinking this is interesting because as we have some building projects around the city right now or street works.
Right.
South Street was just dug up and there was no lighting on the areas of the sidewalk that were dug up. They did have cones and they put plastic over the cement, but with the areas that were dirt, they didn't have any barriers preventing people from.
Well, maybe they should have.
Uh this one, thank you.
So it didn't have lanterns.
It did not have lanterns.
Especially there's somebody like little L E D.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with this. I mean, I think it's I don't think we need. I mean, this is nineteen forty-five, but um. Okay, uh so we don't we took out the lanterns, so that's fine. And then this one is we're gonna try to get all gender language in the ordinance and revise to be non-gender specific, which we did that in thi this group, this grouping here.
Yes.
And I think probably this is gonna be a recommendation that we so I believe there is supposed to be a full-scale review of the ordinances every ten, do you remember the charter? It's ten years.
Yeah, it's every ten years.
So um maybe that is something that we can add into that full-scale review. Is just go through the entire document and to find a replace for he and her.
Can't we just do that here like?
I mean, we could, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I like I.
But we'd have to I but here so here's how what we'd have to do is we'd have to mark every ins every instance and
Do we have it?
and mm like say where it is and give it to Barbara 'cause she'd have to advertise it.
Okay, so if we said the word he in section sections A, B, C, D, E, and G will be replaced with they.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's actually that's why I.
Okay.
Um alright, so let's do you wanna do you wanna 'cause we could probably do that now with and without it being too time consuming.
Yeah, I'm starting to look. The problem my s search and find is it's putting anywhere that the word the letters he or.
Oh, are you?
Do the whole world's whole words on.
And. You I wonder if you put it in quotes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I tried that, but it didn't even fit in.
Oh, it's gotta be a trick. Tom, you know it?
Uh it depends on the usually if you.
It's not it's like a Google or like I said, B D F search, right?
If there.
I miss in my Chrome searching.
Yeah.
May I look here?
So I'll pull up the ordinances.
Are you sure we can't just say like throughout throughout the document?
I wish I wish we I well, I can ask Barbara. I can I mean.
There might not be that many actually. When I'm searched, I turned it now because it was such a mess for grabbing, but as I'm flipping through.
Right. Uh that that would be nice.
Let's see if I get those. Like everywhere it is, it's going up with this. Let me see if I can.
Control. Let's see, I came up with four thousand nine hundred sixty-four.
Yeah, but those are.
And those are all part of.
Other words.
Other words established when?
Um see what uh oh.
Uh.
So weird. I know how to do this in like uh like I've got everything downloaded like Adobe like whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
On my computer and I can pretty easily do this, but I'm not sure how to do it.
I'm uh here. I mean, well, if I mean, if it's something that you think is like, I'll just I'll just scroll through and see if I can find anything that pops out real quick. But if I mean, if you have a way to do this quickly, it doesn't look like there's that. It doesn't look like there's that many, you know, 'cause I haven't found one and I'm I'm over a hundred and you know. Um it's mostly the.
Yeah, that's what I'm finding about it.
Wonder if I did he slash she. Oh, I found one. Uh there's three. Here we go.
Oh, yeah, that's good. Yeah, I put it in quotes and that's working. It's a little preview.
Alright, so um it looks like four section four dash eighteen.
Yeah, number four.
Proceed uh section number four.
Yeah.
So let me put that on here. Uh.
And then section thirteen one.
Alright, hold on. Here, I'm gonna five four dash eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Section four and um just say. Okay, and oops, that's not really good. Okay, and you said what was the next one?
Section five dash two one.
Five dash two one.
To believe he is a minor.
Okay, so and that is section five dash two one. Is there a is there a sub?
Five. Yeah.
Or so replace he.
Yep. And then the next place is uh is it section six twelve?
Six twelve.
And it's letter the um it's under police powers of arrest.
Okay.
And kept into custody until he or she can be taken to public court. It's under uh well, it's not part of that though. It's like.
Under.
Police powers of arrest of city ordinance is section six twelve.
Okay, and uh
Okay.
Place he she.
Uh yeah, he she.
Yeah.
Um. This is section six fifteen C is the word he. Specific ordinance or rule or regulation in which he slash comma she or it is a power to enforce. Who's it? Oh, the oh, it's the department.
The department.
Okay.
Yeah.
My goodness.
And do we want uh all and all of these replaced with they?
They, yeah.
Yeah.
Um the next one is it's sign um section eight four two. Um it's under erection of barriers and it's the word he is used twice.
Okay, um uh seven eight eight?
Dash four two.
Dash four two.
Those two B's. Every person, every such person shall wreck upon any building which he owns or which he has charged. That's the next one. Um. And under section ninety-five.
Okay, but which one is this? Nine five?
Section ninety-five business owner's permit. Um letter F is a he she's he slash C. There's a he slash she in there.
F. I'm just gonna.
Okay, and the next one is section nine dash six. Um there's a he and letter A. No person shall operate a vehicle unless he or she. It says he or she, so.
Okay.
Um um oops, it's like yeah, that's it. Let me put in his though.
Okay. Okay.
'Cause there's uh there's at least one where it talks about the mayor in specifically.
Okay. Yeah, so section uh two dash seven two point one.
Okay, um I'm gonna put these in order. So two dash two seven one?
Two seven two point one.
Two dash seven two.
Two dash seven two.
One. And that is um number seven. Um replace his her, his slash her.
Right, with that?
With there.
Down?
There. E I I.
Okay, there.
E I I. Um section two dash seven nine.
Two dash nine.
Um replace his, maybe numbers of his immediate family. Yeah, there's a lot more for his her than.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh boy.
Section two dash eight three.
Okay.
Second paragraph. There's two his hers to replace.
Yes.
Yeah, and two just there's two of them.
Both?
Yeah.
The person. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Um section three dash three seven. Um replace his. Operator of a bicycle, this is letter C, sorry, letter C. Operator of a bicycle shall signal by either hand giving attention. Three. Flowers that we have. Section four dash three point one. About veterans, letter D. There's three of the word his in this paragraph about veteran veterans. His again.
With their, right?
Yeah, section five dash two.
Two. No, I'll go through and make sure all the calculations.
Okay. Okay. Letter V.
Five dash two?
Yeah, letter V. There's two his. It's top-notch farmers, farmer who raises his own boys. Okay. Um mm section five dash one six. There's one his, his fully.
One point six or sixteen?
Five point five dash sixteen, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Section five dash twenty. There are two hises. Um section five dash three three. So the possession of.
Uh five dash three three?
Yeah, letter B. There's a his, her, his slash her.
They are there.
Their, this is all uh because that's the yeah, and then you can just copy and paste that. Cause the same thing, section five three four B. There's also a person.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it four?
Yeah, four three four. Okay, and then let's see this. Section five dash three six. A.
Yeah, three six A.
Hmm. Alright. Section five dash three nine. A his or her.
That's a his or her.
His or her, yeah, with the slash, but yeah. Okay, um now his slash her, section six dash fourteen.
Six dash fourteen.
Mm-hmm. Second paragraph, his slash her.
Is it there or they?
Yeah. Their, six dash one six.
Six one six. Six.
Letter okay, it's one. N- number one uh hi- under false alarms, A. A his slash her. Hmm um section seven dash one. This is one about the mayor, his salary.
Seven dash one.
Just replace his with her. No, just kidding.
Oops um so replace
His with her.
his.
Okay, section seventy-four dash four something. Hmm. This is next one, nine dash five.
Nine dash five, we have he, she.
The letter D.
Oh, letter D. So I'm gonna go before this.
D and E don't have a his.
Okay, so D.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it's a his.
Yeah.
And it's a he.
Yeah, with their even I just type their their.
Oh, yeah. That's okay.
And also F.
Oh, and this is E.
Yeah, E and then F has a his as well.
F has a his as well. So replace he, she with they and.
The chief of police or has a the.
His.
With their. Okay, so next. Hmm, okay.
Oh, it's you uh it's D and E and then F has a.
E. E.
I don't feel I'm gonna break a lot of it too.
No.
Well, just give something.
Now we're on section eleven dash two.
Uh eleven dash oh good, alright, so we're past all these other ones. Eleven.
Okay, cool. Last paragraph, um his, her, his slash her.
His slash her.
With their. This is about the city, but
Okay.
Okay, and the next one is section eleven dash seven. This has got a complaint of a nuisance.
Okay.
Um um there's two his hises that should two hises to be theirs.
Right?
Yeah, the two of them, there's two of them.
Is uh two I wonder if these are quotes.
Hmm. Now we're at section eleven dash eight. Last paragraph, um his. Again.
I'm gonna go through and put I should probably put quotes around all these, right? To like make it clear.
I guess we're gonna replace it, right, to.
I mean I think
Which doesn't matter.
ultimately like Barb's gonna format it for no way that it's gonna go out to the posting.
Yeah, she'll form. I mean this is just for intent.
Yeah.
I think she um she'll understand what this.
Yeah.
Eleven nine, section eleven dash nine.
Yeah.
There there's two hises.
And this one, I feel like.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see. Um section eleven dash eighteen. Hi. A his slash her.
Place a his slash her. Barbara's gonna love us for this.
We already did two dash seven two, right?
Yeah.
Okay, right now I have to check
Yeah.
the him.
Okay. We haven't done him yet?
No, that's the subjective program. We did subjective, possessive, no.
Yeah. Oh, well.
Okay. This is only found in five. Okay, so the first the first one's um
Okay.
five dash three nine.
Five dash three nine, okay, so.
So it's him or her, so it should be them.
Okay, and I and and or her.
Wait, yeah.
I that's because that's in same section five one three nine.
Yeah.
Replace for his his or her and him or her.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we're she'll attach the permit issued to them under provisions of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um okay, section seven dash one.
Seven dash one, replace yeah, seven.
Yeah, so you have with a him, so him with them.
And. Him. Him with them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Section seven dash four, him with them. Um section E look at that section nine dash six, E.
Oh, we don't have that one yet. Nine dash six.
It says conducts him or herself in a orderly fashion with themselves.
Him or herself too.
Yeah.
Themselves, themself, themselves.
Place to replace.
Yeah, conducts himself and themselves.
him or her. Selves.
Self.
Him herself.
To themself.
To them.
Self. Just just for you, just just that.
Okay.
And um section eleven dash four. Uh
Dash four?
Him to them.
Um place him to.
Um section eleven dash nine.
Okay.
Him to them. Hmm that that was no, that's it.
Alright, good.
Woo.
So this this is ready to go.
Alright. Yeah.
Um so what I'll do is I'll send this over, I'll send it to Omar and to Barbara and just be like, hey, this is what we came up with so far um and you know making sure that we're good to go, but I think hopefully once we can cause all Barbara's gonna probably freak out with advertising problems of it, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
But we'll see, we'll see. I mean, there there must be a way to be able to do package it some way to make it like manageable.
Yeah, I mean you could say we're gonna replace the word him with them or him, her with them in sections and then list them out. Then it's just a line.
Right. Yeah.
How do we feel about um chairman, chairman?
Oh. Chairperson. Chairperson.
I'm a little shocked.
Yeah, well, cause I just looked it up um so.
Alright, I'm giving classes right now.
It's not too many, it's only.
Okay.
Okay, so it's in the um the the con- the table of contents first of all.
Okay.
Section two dash five one. Designation of chairman.
Two dash five one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it's you see um.
Division three, section one two dash five. Chairman to chairperson. And that's section two dash five one where it appears again.
A prison.
Oh, but that's chairman. I think there was some chairman too.
Oh, chairman, chairman.
Um.
Man.
No, no, no.
One.
Hmm, okay, okay.
Okay, perfect. It's um I'm gonna just share this with both of you.
Okay.
Just so you can have a copy of it if you need. So now you guys are editors of this.
Okay.
Alright, perfect. Um okay uh oh that's good. I mean, that at least is gets that the easy ones off our plate.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And so now we just have the bigger ones that we should um and you guys want do you wanna talk about those real quick um and talk about timeline form? Uh I'm gonna just take a look at our report, so do so February minutes. Does it say in the minutes which were the bigger ones that we were gonna?
Um well whichever ones those.
No, no, those are just the easy ones.
Yeah.
So um let me I will share the report up here and maybe we can just take a cast it up. Alright, so let's take a look at these from the beginning and we'll just uh so I think that section one point four was one of the easy ones. Wait, number one point seven we did. So reports committed by members of registered voters. We didn't do this, right?
Right.
This feels like a material change. I'm very much in support of it, but I do think that it's
Yeah. One that we should bring as a separate agenda.
It's actually a matter of public policy, not just like in.
Yeah, and we think and then we discussed that it shouldn't just be resident. It just would resonate our interest because.
Yeah. So this one should be one that we bring to the full council as a separate agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let me just I'm gonna um bear with me for a second. Bring this. I'm gonna create a doc that has the ones that we're gonna bring as separate agenda.
It is interesting though to think about it like how especially when we've seen like the zooming, like how you know people with certain agendas, whether it's the anti-mask or whatever were just infiltrating meetings across the country that they did.
Right.
So you could see someone, if there was a certain interest, you could be getting people on committees that
Right, I mean.
that don't yet so it's weird because we have the resident, but you don't really need to be like we have people on committees that aren't residents, but they have a big work here.
They have some other time.
There's some like.
Yeah, it's not just like I wanna pay down something in your town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean I've got a coworker who zooms into his the community. He grew up in like Economic Development Council. Just cause he grew up there, he's anonymous now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure, you know, and he he's a member of the thing now, but like and he like grew he's got some ties to the area, so I was just like a completely random person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess that to some extent at the end of the day, there's you know a mayor and the city council council who get to vet whether or not
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
a uh a person
Yeah.
had had is has some qualifications to be here.
Exactly.
Okay, so let me just close this. So it looks like uh the council of aging one we fixed. If appropriate, I believe we fixed that one, right?
Yeah.
Uh updated updated through garage sales. So this chapter five is we didn't do anything with that, is that correct?
Yeah, but that was something that we thought needed to um be discussed with Barb and the police department. I think all the rest of them were things we needed to bring in, the people, the departments that are that are impacted.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put this in as um I just wanna make sure that we don't miss anything or lose track.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um alright, let's see. Uh police department noted the language is currently should be reviewed and updated. Six one. It's not sufficiently detailed. Sometimes does not stand up in court. It's under the purview of the building department. We didn't do anything then, alright?
No.
No.
So let's put this in.
I see we should have fluid if we wanted to open our meeting.
Seriously. Um I you know, so I didn't hear back from the building commissioner. I wonder I wonder if he's just like
She.
She, oh really?
Yeah, BJ, Brenda Church.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should have used non
Yeah.
gendered language. Jeez, God, I'm not walking the walk here. Um but I feel like when I sent that email, it was let me just
Was it BJ?
Let me see who I sent it to.
Building commissioner, is that different than the building inspector?
I sent I sent it to
Maybe that's why they're not coming.
Oh, Brenda. But but that's Brenda.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
That's her name, but she goes by BJ.
Oh, BJ. I'm gonna miss that. I kinda must have been rushing on that bit. Alright, um uh six five, keeping swine. Did we we said those were these were some of the ones that we said should be like eliminated, right?
Yeah. Do you wanna just maybe could cross out some?
I don't know if I can do that in um in this PDF.
Mm-hmm.
In at least in this, can I?
But we but that was in our uh
Yeah.
It's in our it's in.
The doc.
Okay, I'll get rid of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, outdated, eliminated or revised. We did that. Um so we're gonna do eliminate huh.
We did eliminate. Because it's covered by snake. You still can't sort of view.
Uh that should be changed. That's
That was already dealt with in the ad nauseam.
Uh it says uh oh yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Uh needs updating.
We dealt with that.
We dealt with this one to seven sixteen. Did we do that? Um
In the fact of the uh we did not keep seven sixteen.
Okay, do you mean uh let's hear. Can you tell me what it is so I can correct it then?
Yeah.
We probably shouldn't even use the Collins Center either. We should probably just leave it open.
Right, just leave it open.
Because It would be just random of this issue with the the housing oversight.
Right, right, for the um affordable housing. Yeah.
So I like the Collins Center.
Cause it changes, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's here.
Um seven sixteen. Well, I think I can pull it up. It's uh effective date uh effective date of plan pay adjustments.
Oh yeah.
Um the classification and compensation plans adopted by this article shall become effective in nineteen fifty. And any salary or wage adjustment shall be retroactive to April first nineteen fifty. And. And salary adjustment by of elected officials of the city for the year nineteen fifty shall be considered a temporary cost of living bonus payable in weekly installments April first nineteen fifty terminating December thirty first nineteen fifty. I'm pretty sure we could probably just uh delete that.
I just eliminated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a feeling that yeah that seems to have worked itself out.
I don't wanna be retroactive in nineteen fifty.
Um can we just can we add that to um that one seems like it's a sta like it's easy to be bundled with the rest of them.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah yeah.
Sure.
Alright I'm gonna put that over
I'm gonna
um that's that's very specific to nineteen fifty so I don't think we need to worry about that one I'm gonna put it with all the ones that uh eliminated ordinance ones.
Mm-hmm.
Um I'm gonna use my little paintbrush that I know how to do now. And I'm gonna do look at that jeez that's amazing. Okay good alright that's a good one so um seven sixteen needs updating or deletion okay oh uh seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Ah can we just look at that because I feel like that might be easy enough to just say to like change the wording and put it in with the rest of these saying that the report on a classification compensation of positions prepared by
I think there was I don't know I think there was more to it though I remember that there was more to it.
Is there more to it?
Yeah.
I don't wanna lift up your shoulders or whatever.
Oh no you're fine.
So but what does it say and what is that ordinance section?
I think I think
Oh yeah you know what you want me to change I can change this so it actually goes to the desktop and let's see yeah.
I'm pretty sure there was more there.
There we go. So seven fifteen adoption of plan the report on classification of positions prepared
Is that the only that's only seven fifteen?
Yeah.
Oh.
Um.
Maybe it was seven sixteen is that what we deleted seven sixteen?
That's what we just
Yeah. So.
What about seven seventeen yeah? Um I think it was like the whole mm-hmm.
Should we just say the report on classification and compensation of positions um a copy which is on file and the office of the city clerk is hereby made part of this chapter as if fully set forth within
Mm-hmm.
you're in?
Um.
Or do we even need that?
Could you just say the most recent report on
Is it
Yeah could we just do that?
Should be on file with the city clerk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah yeah.
Alright.
Just the most recent report and then
Yeah we don't need to say
prepared by we just cut that.
Okay so let me just put um here seven fifteen yeah I'm gonna put this here so
About seven sixteen.
Seven fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Well I'm gonna keep all the eliminate ordinances together I guess.
No I can do it.
Um and I'm gonna take this I'm just gonna copy and paste oh can I I think it looks like I can. There we go look at that uh the most recent report on classification of position.
Mm-hmm.
Um
A copy of which?
A copy of which uh should shall be on file?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah makes sense right perfect alright is that good?
I shall um I think the is makes sense because of the the parallel structure with the next is like it's what I'd say like this ordinance is not saying like it it's like you have to have it on file it's saying it is on file.
Okay. So is on file.
Which yeah which is on file it's here by
Which is on file yeah.
is here by made a part of this.
Most recent report on classification and compensation of positions a copy of which is on file okay alright yeah that's fine um
If you're Yeah copy.
So this goes back to seven sixteen. I think we did eight one that was that I think that might have been the
That's crazy.
Yeah that was that was the one that that was the one that
Mm-hmm. We got rich.
Council pink we wrote for these accommodations.
Yeah now we know we got all these ones section eight eight one six two the coal hole right?
Yeah. Coal. Check it coal.
Yeah yeah yeah. Okay we got that one. Um oh section on signs hmm.
Yeah that's that's a whole thing.
That's a real thing like
Cause that's like constitutional law.
Signs signs that
That's a big one um I feel like Jeff told me uh but anyway I'm I'm gonna put it in I'm gonna put it in uh the the for what we need to do section. Copy there. So we're still gonna have a pretty big to do list of this end.
Mm-hmm.
But it's getting smaller this is great you know control needs to match current we didn't do anything with that right?
Yeah.
Okay so that's the last one so that's I'm gonna put that in our pile of things to be ever missed.
Uh there is one more um
Oh okay.
You
Is it the um
You put eight point seven six there but the signs are eight point seven five.
Oh.
Uh and there's or no they're not they're chapter eight article five eight point seven six is
Oh this is different one my bad okay. I saw the eight and just like my brain just went straight to it.
It's where the board of public works so when you charge it.
Of the signs.
Well it's it's nobody's in charge of it now there's like literally it's like wild wild west out there nobody's enforcing the sign ordinances.
I mean depending
Cause you know those like
Couple went to the supreme court and they're just like you can't have sign ordinances.
Yeah I know well you can time place manner or something you know it's like but no no dictation on size or anything
Yeah. Yeah.
based on content cause you like we have like real estate signs we have wayfinder signs we have all like every form description but
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
and you can't regulate on the size of the sign by content um alright so I'll put this last one and this one is eight point seven I can we just take a quick look at that do you guys mind?
No.
Alright let me just um oops. And that was the one that was eight point seven six. Let's go take a look at it eight point seven six. Hmm it must be the oh. Thanks for maybe know my numbers. Here we go. Uh erection of certain signs by nonprofit okay. Yeah see this whole section needs a like cause we can't regulate times by certain
Yeah. Like churches and
By category I don't think we can do that.
Oh yeah no.
I think we're gonna have to we're just gonna have to bring the whole sign thing forward and go through it and just strike any constitutionality.
Yeah.
And I think Jeff has already started that process.
Mm send to the city attorney.
Yeah.
So um this is something that we can let I what I'll do is I'll put I'll put this in here and I'll just I'll put this uh there's gotta be a way to kind of highlight these because these these two are signs and I'll put them as blue and I'll put it on just be waiting to put a note right here I think and a comment okay. Alright good stuff um so I think that's it though.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Alright let me just um close this out and do you guys do you guys mind if we just take a quick look at um the this together I I feel like maybe for the vacant storefront like we should try to just schedule another meeting where we can get the building commissioner and the EDIC people to in one place
Mm-hmm yeah. Yeah.
Cause I feel like we're in goods we're getting to a pretty good spot
Yeah.
but I really really need that input from the building commissioner cause
Yeah.
Yeah yeah could she respond or?
I don't know I'm sure she's um okay you guys see this?
Yeah.
So um this is all of the other cities that have it
Mm-hmm.
and so they have definitions vacant building any unoccupied occupied or non-residential commercial or industrial real property which is not legally occupied is abandoned not used for a period of at least ninety consecutive days or long by occupancy and blue rights of property or is intermittently occupied but presently blue right entry but exhibits in the opinion of the building inspector dilapidated walls roof doors which failed to prevent the entry which was in this one period of seven days. They have a hardship waiver thirty day review application to the inspectional services department we do not have well I guess the building inspection building inspector cannot consider that. See what those has. We probably don't need to read those out so.
Alright.
I don't need to read all these.
Yeah. Well
I mean maybe for the I guess
Yeah.
Uh any commercial real property containing a visible storefront on the ground level that is not legally occupied is abandoned or is not used for a period of at least ninety consecutive days and not under active construction
I'll be there.
undergoing active rehabilitation renovation or repair subject to an active building permit to make the building fit for occupancy. Any commercial building in which one of uh which more than half of the total exterior windows or doors are broken boarded or open without functioning lock shall be devacate regardless of occupancy or the existence of a building permit. Uh and it and who's the hardship provision planning director and the building inspector may join the exempted property owner from the provisions of this article upon the presentation of evidence of such form that may be convincing them failure to use or occupy the building for a period in excess of ninety days does not violate the purpose or intent of this article and they have to register the vacancy with the planning and community development department and the inspectional services department of the forms agreed upon which provide by and provided by such departments. And lol any property not legally occupied in preceding ninety days and not in subject of an active valid building agreement so
That's a simple
Super simple but ninety days seems to be the magic number.
Yeah.
You know uh the fee structure is a thousand dollars a year for year one and a thousand dollars every year after. I so they have violations A failure to register with the commissioner shall be considered a violation of this article and is punishable by a fine fine of three hundred each week that such violation continues shall be considered a separate offense. Uh failure of identified property contact to respond to the city communications within the required timeframe shall be considered a violation of this article a punish of three hundred dollars. Each such violation shall be considered a separate offense failure to maintain the property shall be considered a violation of this article and is punishable by a fine of up to three hundred dollars. Each week that such violation continues shall be considered a separate offense any expenses incurred by the city lol relative to securing or maintaining property shall be recoverable by placing lien on the property. And any person agreed by the requirements of this article may seek an administrative appeal by making a written application to the city manager. Okay and then finally new effort thanks for doing what you guys are doing best here.
Mm-hmm.
Any commercial building in which no person or entity actually conducts a lawfully licensed business in such building or any residential building in which no person lawfully resides in any part of the building or mixed use building in which neither a licensed business nor lawful residence exists further any building in which more than one half of the total exterior windows and doors are broken boarded or open without functioning lock shall be devacate regardless of occupancy. They have a five dollar inspection five hundred dollar inspection fee and to register the first year is five hundred years one to two is a thousand years two to three is two thousand years three plus is three thousand failure to register is three hundred dollars a day.
Lawful Cool.
Definitely wanna register that uh you can appeal the validity of the vacancy only.
No it's forty five days.
Within forty five days of building home each owner of such vacant building shall register said building with the department of inspectional services by providing such department or be created. So interesting interesting stuff that's good and it seems like ninety days is like the most widespread um and I I think what we can do is we can take a a a a harder look once we get the building inspector and and the other members of the EIC so we'll try to get them in for the next morning so I've given them plenty of notes. Uh and okay now let me just stop the share since Owen's here. I think I got I look I got the glasses on I can't see uh let me pull up what I got for personally. There we go. And And I think probably you know uh Owen probably the best thing to do is just to give us a you know uh a review
That's yeah of course.
Yeah and then um I did I talked to Kristen yesterday no two days ago. Um right is that her name's Kristen right?
Yep.
Okay um and she did send it to me I thought. But let me see if she sent it to this one. Yeah there it is. There it is. Share my screen. Oh that's
Did you say that?
She's
Uh no. Check out this cool thing.
Uh I but Worcester or not yeah I was gonna say Worcester has some great murals and um I was in York Pennsylvania a couple weeks ago and they have some amazing murals. Uh I I'd love to see more mun- municipal based mural.
Mm-hmm.
Here we go so this is basically the same one that we have submitted I just pulled it up cause it's the easiest one I have on here.
Yeah.
Um so I I think the only difference is to ours um unless you have you have ours handy.
I have our is this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I I
But do you want me to you like I can you I mean I have it right here.
Yeah do you want yeah do you want to email it to me just real quick?
Yeah I'm sorry again about the missed the missed number I
No it's what it's it fixed in our in our it's fixed.
Which email do you want just here to see?
I just listed it here that's fine.
I just sent it.
Okay. This is actually really helpful having this TV in here.
Oh yeah how did it just
So it's uh the instructions right there it just um it's
Your Chromecast?
It's Chromecast so you just go to the wifi and you click on Chromecast and there's a password on the paper and it just allows you to sign right in.
Cool.
Yeah. Okay. May open it. Look at that.
Thanks.
Thanks. And that should be section six point two three.
Two three correct yes we were not replacing our facial recognition uh
Yeah. Yeah.
I know that'd be awkward.
So that would that would be interesting.
Okay.
Although um yeah so um I know all of you have received emails from a bunch of stakeholders uh over the last week there might be some more. This is um you know so I I'll try to think of a good place to start you know as as all of you know ordinance regulates time place and manner of of actions or um behaviors within the city so this is basically a way of regulating manner of practices of limited service pregnancy centers or what they call CPC's crisis pregnancy centers. The issue with these facilities is that typically they undertake a lot of deceptive practices around women's reproductive care both in terms of prenatal care and just general reproductive care you know perinatal care um birth control etcetera um and these centers in many places outnumber um uh they they don't typically offer abortions which is fine they don't typically offer birth control which is fine but the problem is that they um engage in in activities and uh methods of um uh advertisements that are typically deceptive and so for instance to give an example they'll have like a picture of someone in like scrubs or a lab coat and say you know uh need to make decisions on your pregnancy come visit our center and so it gives people the impression that they're going to see a medical provider that of course the individual gets there and they find out that it's not a licensed medical facility they don't have a medical provider on staff and that the options that are available to them are not a full spectrum of of kind of prenatal options they're very limited. Um and then furthermore uh pregnant people are often then kind of pulled into this with the prom Um and then furthermore, uh pregnant people are often then kind of pulled into this with the promise of um you know, being guided appropriately through their pregnancy, only to have certain milestones delayed, especially in situations where they might be considering termination of pregnancy, for instance. So you know, in many states where like it's a fifty fifteen um uh abortions are legal, these centers might, for instance, kind of string someone along, give them the impression that they might not even be pregnant until it's like fourteen weeks and then they don't have options. So kind of things like that, you get the gist. Um. The many states have uh these unfair deceptive and abusive uh business practices uh regu- regulations around those, but the problems of those regulate commercial businesses, so a lot of the way that these CPCs operate, they're not effectively a commercial business. They're unfortunately typically affiliated with religious centers, um and so they're exempt from that, so there's a loophole in the law there, but certainly one can say, especially for many individuals who are seeking um reproductive care, that they're in a very vulnerable position. Oftentimes as well, um it's individuals without means or privilege or money, you know, who are marginalized either financially or also marginalized um because of race and they don't have uh the knowledge or the uh access to certain uh to to um reproductive services that some other people do. And so they're lured into these centers under certain pretexts and and provided with false information that could significantly affect their lives and care. Um even if they choose to, individuals choose to bring a pregnancy to a full term, that a lot of times of some of these services that are offered, they are not um you know, they're they're not necessarily medical in nature, they're religious in nature, they're political in nature. So um. The state of Connecticut basically created uh legislation around this, um yeah, I want to say that was twenty twenty that Connecticut did, and now Hartford already has ordinance of the books that dates back to, I believe, twenty seventeen, that was actually legally challenged and there was no decision, there was a settlement, but it was upheld, and it's similar stuff to this. Uh but the state of this this uh this language is pretty much strictly based off of the state of Connecticut's uh language. Harford goes a little bit more into disclosures about um you know, whether uh asking these businesses or or uh to disclose whether there's a licensed medical provider on site or not, uh which is something I'd be interested in, but frankly not now, I think this, I wanted to put forward kind of the most the simplest uh form of language to uh to address kind of this issue. Um and so uh it's existed in Connecticut, there's been a couple of legal challenges, none of them have stuck. And then uh that's how uh Kristen Strezzo, a counselor from Silverville comes into the picture. So uh she in conjunction with Planned Parenthood, um and a few other kind of stakeholders put forward basically this exact language in Somerville, which is passed in Somerville, uh with um you know, their legal counsel. Um to my understanding, feeling that this, you know, is solid. Because so I guess to go back really briefly, there's been similar legislation in other states that that did not pass muster. And the reason it did was because it kind of went after more, it 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 was more um went after more speech of some of these centers, and so this doesn't address speech, so you could have a CPC in East Hampton, because we're talking about East Hampton, that says things like, we don't believe in abortion, or you know, um you know, maybe overtly religious themes around pregnancy or other things that that um reflect their beliefs, but we're not going after people's beliefs, we're going at, we're we're addressing the practices that um they're they choose to try to engage people into their business. Um so again, we're going after deceptive deceptive business practices here. Um.
The manner.
Hmm?
The manner.
The manner, exactly, exactly. Um and actually uh found this great uh legal brief that I'll send to you all that really talks about this. So Counselor Strezzo in Somerville, uh they just passed this recently, and then um I had the opportunity to to connect with her and uh
Nate.
uh Willis Harwitz or Harwitz Willis, I can't remember the the words. Uh he's uh one of the executive director from Planned Parenthood, I think you received a brief email from him. Uh and then uh some other folks uh within the local reproductive justice community, Jennifer McKenna from the Women's Law Center, um and Carrie Baker as well, uh who also um uh works in this area, and then some counselors from Northampton and Amherst, so Amherst currently has something similar um in committee and I believe Northampton will be soon as well. Um basically all this does, it it's complaint based, like we have like many of our ordinances, basically this just asks any individual that feels that they've gone, that has gone to a CPC and has gone there expecting certain services and for whatever reason, because of the nature of the advertising around these services, has been deceived um into into you know, uh entering premises and and um um uh then ultimately receiving services that were not what they believed that they were going to receive based on um uh the um ad- advertising, you know, whether that be a newspaper ad or online or a radio ad. Uh and you know, and that could be implied, like I said, just like looking at a picture of someone like in a lab coat to outwardly saying, you know, looking looking to explore all of your choices when your pregnancy comes to us. So when you hear looking to explore all of your choices, that is, there's something pretty um explicit there, you know, in terms of like someone make. And this is not, I want to be very clear, this is not about abortion. It's about folks who either um are are looking to um you know, explore o- options around A, a pregnancy, or again, around just reproductive issues. Uh and so uh someone who has been, you know, exposed to some sort of deceptive practice, they report it to the the health department and and apply this issue, basically.
And can other people report it? I mean, it doesn't have to be so, because to me, the the people that are going, like you mentioned earlier, are so vulnerable and oftentimes the people that go to those don't have a system of support or confidence to even. So like, like if any of us in this room aware of these practices and we saw like an advertisement, can anybody report this, that's what I'm saying.
I don't see why not, I mean if you were to like see an ad like, uh you know, uh like, you know, newspaper like under.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen them, but yeah.
Yeah, and you say like, I I know for a fact that they're not offering, or or suspect, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because they could, the the health, the health depart, the uh the health director can certainly just go there and say, do you offer these services?
Yeah. Yeah.
They say, no, well, so yeah, I don't see why not, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And 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 there's no mechanism necessarily for the actual reporting to the health department, so I think any anybody that has.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm imagining it would be more like other people looking out.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, no, that's that's a really, that's a really, I think, salient point that, yeah.
Yeah.
We're unfortunately, a lot of people who are the victims of this kind of advertising are vulnerable and might not want to reveal their identity or in tricky situations.
Or might just not be familiar with city ordinances.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yes.
We were just looking through the city ordinance and their stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the person that goes to this is in a, they're in a point of crisis and um in their life, so it's like reporting is.
Yeah. Yes.
Understressed.
Just uh uh one question I have, so say that someone has a center like this and they run an ad in the newspaper, online, whatever, and five people have an issue with it and they report to that person, do they get three separate three hundred dollar fines or do they just get one fine for the ad?
Um each failure, well, I guess so. Each failure comply with the requirements set forth in this ordinance shall be deemed a separate offense. Well, I I think, so if they all complained, let me let me see if I can jump onto this one.
Right.
If they all complained about the same ad, the same feature, the same pamphlet, that would be considered, so that would be five accounts of the same offense.
Right.
But if they had five different pamphlets or five different modes of reaching those people,
Yeah.
that those could be considered separate offenses, I think.
I think that makes sense, it's like if like if five, if five people live in a house and their house is robbed, it's not like
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, right.
The person who gets it ripped is five times, so yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that does mean, I just wonder because some of these like mega churches, I mean, like my my dad's family, like
Yeah.
they're low, these churches are lower, they're bigger than the malls.
You know. Well, yeah, I was gonna ask with the fine, is this the normal fine or can that be?
Oh yeah. I think that's the maximum allowed by the state and the city.
Under under section twenty one D.
Yeah, and I think I, and I think MGL too, I think that's the maximum as well, yeah, um.
Certainly that this has ever been tied to consumer protection law.
Yeah, so um and I'll, so I'll send you that, um so uh I'll send you that that brief, so
Okay.
the 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 answer is yes with an asterisk, and this kind, again, this goes back to, I think I could I could tell you, I could give you an exact, like a a more exact answer, it was just absolutely.
Well, I think one of the, one of the reasons why we're seeing kind of a movement around this, I think there's there is pressure to the state legislators to try to push this at a state level, like Connecticut.
Yeah.
You know, and so as uh like as more communities swell up, it just puts more support.
Yeah, yeah, because yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're poised to be, we're gonna, right, we're a sanctuary state, so.
Right.
There's more and more states shut down, so they're they're gonna be looking to kind of lay leave these, not only people from our state, but people coming into our state.
Coming in, because a lot of states are going to be twenty two, twenty two states, that's pretty crazy. Um and I, Owen, can you just talk really briefly about the health uh uh department's role in this, the health inspector, how their thoughts on this?
Yeah, is it is it okay if I answer the?
Yeah, yeah, please, please, please.
So um so apparently, so Massachusetts has some pretty strong consumer protection laws because a lot of times these are nonprofits and supposedly provide free services, although a lot of times that's another kind of deceptive practice. Um they're able to evade those those um uh consumer protection laws because it's it's that's a not supposedly non-commercial. Uh and then so in terms of the health department, so you know, as you know, in the city, um you know, our enforcement, our enforcement agencies are police, uh uh how uh how how housing inspector and health department, I don't think we have anyone else, right? So I mean, this definitely is not a police matter, um and then it comes down to housing and health, and to me, to me, it makes sense a hundred percent.
It's health, yeah, it's health.
Makes sense with health, yeah.
Yeah.
And so I have spoken to the health, the health director, and they are on board with it, they they would like to run it by the board. Um I feel that this item is somewhat time sensitive because of what we're seeing happening nationally, so I'd like to see if there's some conversations that are legal within open meeting laws, the community had to get like some sort of a, an understanding about that. Um so but that, but the the health, uh I've 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 had I've had a few conversations as well as I've forwarded all of the information we've gotten to the health director as well to to educate them around this. Um and uh they don't have an issue with it, but obviously out of respect to their board, they just wanna get a little bit more um um you know, uh a go a go ahead.
Okay, guess how many other questions?
No, I mean, I I, there's nothing here I object to, I my only, I think this is just something that you've been hearing a lot from me, this is not not specific to this, it's just like, I wish there was a way we could give it a little bit more teeth, because I think that that's just, three hundred dollars, they'll just see that as the cost of doing business, like that's just like,
Yeah, three hundred dollars. Yeah.
okay, they're gonna run an ad for two hundred, so now it's gonna be an ad for five hundred, because they're just gonna front load
Take the fine.
the fact that they're gonna have to pay this fine.
I know, I wish they would just shut them down.
I mean.
But the, on the flip, on the flip side of that, if they if they if they do get hit with this, I mean, it could be something that became a s- a story
Right, yeah.
in the media that, you know, ex- exposes the, you know, because it it's a public action.
Yeah. Right, it's better than nothing, I'm not opposed to it, I want to make that clear, I just, I and this is this, we we I we run into this problem
Right.
Yeah, with everything, yeah.
with a bunch of things about just like, where just the fine that we're talking about for the, where you're going after actually powerful people is a pocket change, you know?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
It is.
Um but I don't, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I'd just be very open to hearing any suggestions.
Well, and I think, you know, on the, I I think Lindsay's right that we could potentially see ourselves in the future having this type of facility come here. Right now, the.
Did you say we have one? We have one.
We have one here, in East Hampton?
Yes.
I didn't know.
Yeah, and there, I don't, um we do have one in East Hampton, I would I would encourage you to research and look for advertising.
Interesting. I'm gonna have to do that. Okay, well, we might have more soon.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I think that this makes a lot of sense to get some books and, and as we progress through it,
Well, oh, I'm sorry.
you know, finding other enforcement mechanisms that maybe would have more teeth as we move forward.
Yeah.
You know, if we find that it is becoming.
And it will be with a large press release, three hundred dollar fine, and a very widely disputed press release.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, widely disputed, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, some scary statistics around these is that in 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 at the at the least, these kinds of facilities outnumber um um more uh
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive, thank you, I was trying to think of a good, of a good word that wasn't uh that wasn't judgmental.
Yeah.
More comprehensive centers by three to one in the least, in states where they're actually funded by the state, it's like ten to one. And so, you know, again, like things, simple things, just like, you know, they don't, they they'll offer ultrasound, but it's non-diagnostic ultrasound.
Yeah, just to make you some of the babies.
Right, exactly, right, and 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 then give you potentially non um non-medical opinions about what you're seeing, even though it's
Yeah. Yeah.
doesn't mean anything, and since they're not, now, you know, one could argue, well, you could, there's probably statutes out there about people practicing medicine without a license and stuff like that, but these like non-diagnostic ultrasound centers have some generally broad leeway.
Yeah.
Um uh you know, and again, like, they'll offer free uh like diapers and stuff like that, but they're not really free, you have to do certain things to earn them. And so that might mean like more and more visits that string you along, but so once again, if you if you wanted to either either, if you wanted to terminate your pregnancy, or B, needed the diagnostic information inside if you if you needed to, once again, that's you haven't been provided to that, so it's it's scary.
Yeah, I I in the work that I do with um supporting families who have to terminate pregnancies for medical reasons, um it is a national group now, so I I I interact with families from all over the country, including Texas, Oklahoma, and I've heard personal accounts of people at the, and this is like even even um some of these clinics distorting the medical diagnosis that they've already received from their child, like twisting it around, trying to give them, you know, other statistics that, you know, with God's will, so um yeah, so yeah, I I've heard like personal um accounts from people um and 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 including like um on segment in terms of the the listening to the heartbeat, just to listen to the heartbeat.
Yeah, um so time wise.
Mm-hmm.
We're at May ninth. We have meeting the eighteenth. Which could potentially, I mean, I don't, I like for me, I'm in support of this, and I feel like if we don't have any issues with this, the only the only thing is, I think it would be great to have the board of health
Mm-hmm.
you know, say yes to this, but I don't see any reason to hold it up. Um I I think that moving it would make sense and looking at maybe a June public hearing. Maybe the first meeting in June, so that means that if we could, if you if you know that this is the first time we've actually discussed it, if you guys felt comfortable um voting it out, then I could for the next meeting, we could, unless you wanted to have another meeting on it before our next meeting. I'm open to all options here, but I mean, it is very simple.
Yeah, I don't.
Which is really like, it's it's definitions and then these two sections right here.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it's been vetted by a state with a bigger budget.
Um. It's been vetted. Yeah, a much bigger budget, yeah, yeah, and it's been, and it's been challenged, so
And a state, and a state.
And a state with. Yeah.
I'm happy to, you know, to even vote on this tonight, to bring it to the full council, so we can set a public hearing for it in the first June meeting, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, and I guess if the board of health had a bunch of suggestions, you know.
Then we could always continue the public hearing if we had already said it, or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Just bring it back to committee.
Or we could just bring it back to committee.
A method.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, uh the language that on my family I I work with, um they were actually an international family, they attended from South America, but
Well.
they use the language um religious predators, this kind of thing, and I I would love, I mean, I don't know if they can do that, but I would love to use that kind of like, this is predatory.
Oh, yeah.
Um and so, and that's that's what they call it, um religious predators, because that's the situation that they have.
That counselor.
So two things, one is that I think it's great that you're doing this work, and if you have anyone that you've spoken to who's encountered these uh centers, if they have even under the conditions of anonymity, if they wanted to offer some thoughts and gray.
Thoughts.
Uh the other thing I just want to do is I want to go back to the language and just, I think it's pretty good, but I just wanna, I want to go back to make sure that it's it's trans-inclusive.
Mm-hmm.
Um that because people other than women can be pregnant.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and so I just want to look at that, but those are just minor changes, and I I don't think it's very, I think, yeah, so.
We're actually very experienced.
Yeah, we just went like forty five minutes.
Going into our business.
You didn't see what we just did.
We just, we just literally went through the entire ordinance and and de uh gender. We just, we just literally went through the entire ordinance and and D, uh, gendered language.
D gendered, it could be, okay.
Every kind of pronoun, because that's the subjective, subjective.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Um.
Um, I'm, yeah, I agree, I know, I'm scanning, I don't even see any kind of.
I don't think there's anything.
Yeah, I don't see any reference to any sort of.
And gender, no.
So, um, okay, that's, that's all, well, that, I think that that'll be helpful and, um,
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out, the board of health supposedly doesn't meet until later in June, but I want to try to see, again, if I could have, if there's some conversations that are, um,
Okay.
that we could have, so.
Yeah, that sounds good. Um. Do you, do you all feel comfortable with that timeframe?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, so, uh, I guess at this point, we, you know, I entertain the motion to recommend this to the full council.
Um, certainly.
So.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it is passed, so, Owen, I'm gonna, um, at our next meeting, I will set the public hearing for this, I I want to, I do want to check in with Omar just to make sure that that first meeting in June is okay, um, I I don't remember anything big on there, so, um, but I I think that's, that's great. And, at this point, since we've been here for a while, I want to respect your time, uh, and this is our first in-person meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thanks, everybody, I appreciate it, lots of good work.
Yeah.
Lots of good work.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.